Okay, fantastic. So it's 9:00 AM and I'll call the meeting to order. Carrie, would you please take role?
Chair Brooks.
Here.
Vice Chair Ariscotta.
Here.
Regent Boylan.
Aye.
Regent Brager.
Here.
Regent Brown.
Here.
Regent Carvalho.
Here.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Here.
Regent DelCarlo.
Here.
Regent Downs.
Here.
Regent Goodman.
Here.
Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Perkins.
Here.
Regent Tarkanian. You have a quorum present.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is ask our CFO, Chris Vatan, would you mind leading us in the pledge this morning? Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number One. For those who would like to call in and offer public comment, please dial 669-444-9171 and enter Meeting ID 92849445069 and passcode 5555555. Is there any public comment at GBC?
No public comment in Elko.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the System Office in Reno?
Yes.
Good morning, Chair Brooks, Vice Chair Ariscotta, and Regents Kent Irvin ERVIN, speaking for myself today as a longtime observer. The two items on your agenda today are governance issues. There's not necessarily a single right or wrong answer. On Agenda Item Two, either Option A or Option B is an improvement over the current method of setting salary schedules, which gives the Board no rule, no role at all. That allowed large raises to be implemented for a number of administrators, while most academic faculty salaries were left untouched with no public scrutiny. Option A is preferable because Board approval is the mechanism for oversight. When the Board receives a report on the implementation of a policy from system staff, it may agree 95% of the time and just give routine approval. But if the Board cedes its authority in advance to take action, then there is no mechanism for change when needed. Holding the System Office and institutions accountable is a primary function of the Board. Regarding Agenda Item Three, it is generally a good idea for the leaders of a deliberative body to be chosen by the current members. Otherwise, they may not have the full support needed. The academic year term has the advantage of continuity of leadership before and during legislative sessions. But either calendar can work, provided that all members work together cooperative and in good faith towards shared goals. Thank you.
Is there any further public comments? Okay, we'll move to Las Vegas. Is there public comment here? All right, seeing none, we'll move right into Agenda Item, I'm sorry, SES, is there any public comment on the phone?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll move right into Agenda Item Number Two, the Code Revision, and I'll throw this over to our interim Chancellor Patty Charlton.
Okay, good morning. Thank you so much, Chair Brooks. For the record, Patty Charlton, interim Chancellor for the Nevada System of Higher Education. So Agenda Item Two before you today is the Code Revision Development and Review of Salary Schedules, which talks through the process. And this is the second reading, which would be, again, a code revision. Both of the options require that the independent consultants regarding compensation come before this body to provide the information, provide the appropriate data, and then also to address any questions, comments, or concerns that the Board might have. At the point of actual approval of the salary schedules, Option A would require that any input is received and then brought back to this body for approval. And then Option B would be that the Board would receive that input, make any questions or comments, and then they would defer to the Chancellor for implementation of those recommendations to be, that are considered by the external consultant as well as this body, and that the Chancellor would make the final action to, basically to be more efficient in the process. And so with that, this is, again, the second reading, and we stand ready to answer any questions, but we'll implement accordingly with whatever the will of the Board is. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a question from Regent Downs.
Good morning, Regent Downs.
Hi, thank you. Well, I, so I'm reading the agenda. I'm guessing I'm going to confuse conflicting information here and some text, but I would like to make a motion for for the Option A on the salary schedules.
I second that, Regent DelCarlo.
So Regent Downs made a motion to approve Option A of the for salary schedules, seconded by Regent DelCarlo. Is there any discussion? Okay, I would just, if there's no Regents that have any comments, then I will just make the same comment that I made last time that we were taking a look at this when we were at TMCC, and that is, Option B is a way to go in terms of the Board still having all of the information that we would require. The Board still has approval, except we leave most of the heavy lifting up to those who are actual experts in this given area. And with that, we will just move, if there's no other discussion, we'll move right into a roll call vote.
Regent Brooks, it appears that Regent Goodman has her hand up, at least from where I can see on the screen.
Thank you. I didn't notice that. Regent Goodman?
I just would like to say that I believe that we are here for governance and not micromanagement, and I am more in favor of Option B as well.
Before we move into a roll call vote, are there any? Okay, I just want to make sure. Are there any other comments? Regent Downs?
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I don't see it as micromanaging. I feel like this is us doing our duties and being presented with a very, very important part of our job, which is to approve salary schedules as they come forward. And instead of advocating that responsibility and giving it to someone else, we would take that responsibility head-on and not be able to pass the buck. If we don't, if something comes up where people complain, we approve that salary schedule, not some third party. So that it's important to us that we take on the responsibility of what we were chosen to do and serve in this capacity. Thank you.
Chair Brooks? Chair Brooks, I'd like to speak.
Regent DelCarlo?
Regent DelCarlo, thank you very much, and I'd like to agree with Regent Downs. And if this was working really well, I counted up eight Chancellors that I think were Chancellors between acting interim officer in charge, et cetera, and over the last 10 years. And had this process worked, we wouldn't have had the faculty ignored since 2013 for faculty adjustments. And for that reason, I don't feel I am micromanaging either, but it is our responsibility. And we still have the experts to do the heavy lifting, and for that reason, I'm completely in favor of Option A.
Regent Brager?
When I read, Susan Brager for the record, when I read both of these, how long, I guess I would have a question on how long has it been to where the Chancellor, I'm going to read this, consistent with the current roles and responsibilities of the Chancellor? Does that go back like forever and the Boards have kept it that way? Do we know?
Regent Brooks, through you, to Regent Brager. I believe it was 2018 that the policy changed. That was the timeframe. And so I would say it has not been an extremely long period of time. And I also want to clarify for the record that, again, what is different about this process is that the consultants would come before this body, present their findings, present the supporting documentation and data, and walk through each of those salary schedules for your input and consideration. And so that is what is different than what has happened previously where that was done internally. And it is a comprehensive process. It includes involvement of the Presidents, it historically always has, representations, representations of the institutions, as well as the faculty senates in that process.
Okay, thank you so much. And having that information, I would be more comfortable with Option B because I think that, so from 2017 back, there were many opportunities, and this seems to be the best option coming forward in the different positions that I've had over the last many, many years. So I, that's where I would be at this point in time. Thank you.
Regent Cruz Crawford?
I lowered my hand. Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record, it seems like what I've said has already been stated. This was a hard one for me because I don't want to micromanage. I want to be able to have trust in our experts, which I do, and I would call this a vote for Option B as a trust, but verify. Just a parameter to make sure that we have the right people in the right places making the right decisions. But it was a hard decision for me, so I'd like to share that. Thank you.
Like to give another go around if there's any Regents who want to make comment or have questions before we get into a vote. Go ahead, Regent Carvalho.
Thank you. I'll just reiterate some of the points that I made at the first recent hearing of this, that our state constitution gives the Board of Regents the authority to oversee the financial management of the entire system. NRS 396.280 states specifically, the Board of Regents shall have the power to fix the salaries of the academic staff of the system. The Board also approves contracts for salaries of several positions, including Chancellor and all of our Presidents. And I feel like in the past, we've been disconnected from that process, and I think that this is, this will help. If we approve Option A, this will help in bridging that gap between what a salary schedule, what the salary schedule looks like, and coming forward to approving a President or Chancellor's salary. We also oversee the budget. We oversee collective bargaining agreements. Obviously, we also oversee tuition and fee increases, capital improvement projects. So I'm not sure why this is outside of that. I don't feel like this is micromanaging. I don't feel like this is outside of the scope of what we do. Our Chancellor, no matter who it is, doesn't have to come to us with expertise in salary schedules, and that's why we hire an outside consultant. And I understand that there's concern that perhaps this process could be used against a specific person or role. But I think that we could say that in any setting. I think it's important for us to hold the responsibility of this, as Regent Downs said. And I am, I am in full support of Option A because of all of the responsibility and trust that's put on us as Regents. Thank you.
Regent Cruz Crawford, do you have a follow-up?
Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record, I actually said Option B because I mixed up this morning. I meant Option A is what I was formally discussing. Thank you.
Regent Brager?
I'm sorry, just one, Regent Brager, for the record. One more question is, so when we're hiring a new Chancellor and contracts are negotiated, your stance, so it would be legal and who else is negotiating that contract?
James Martinez, for the record, legal works with the committee. If it's an interim or acting, then we are working with the Chair of the Board. And we're putting all of that together for the recommendation to the Board. So we are legals involved, a committee would be involved, the committee chair, and that contract is what gets brought forward to the full Board for approval.
So it still would be the Board making that final decision on what we would do within parameters. And part of the problem is, is that the State of Nevada, not just Clark County, our pay schedule due to other factors is not as good, and that's why people coming here sometimes have a problem. But we need to tell them there's more than the salary. Housing is better, no state tax. And so we need to work on some of those issues to make sure that they understand the whole package, not just the $1 amount and how it is more than some states because you're not paying, like in Connecticut, I think for a typical house, it's like $18,000 a year in taxes. Well, here you'd be paying five or six. So I think that, I know it's a different subject, so I don't want to vary too far, but just making that comment. Thank you.
Yeah, and to your point, Regent Brager, both of these options provide oversight by the Board. It's just that Option A has a lot more involvement with the Board. And the reason that the Board had decided back in 2017 or 18 to not do it was level of expertise on the Board at that time to actually go through all of the line items. And at that time, the Board felt it would be better to have consultants come in who understand market research value and then present their findings to the Board. Are there any other comments or questions? Regent Boylan, you have your hand up?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I'm all in favor of Option A because it gives the Board more control, and that's what we were elected for. But secondly, I see all these, the Enchi procedures and guidelines, manual, Chapter Three, Section One, blah, 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 blah. It would really help the Board if there was a link after each one of those mentioned. Now, I don't remember exactly where that is in our policy, but I think it's somewhere, because, excuse me, for us to go back every time and look for each, I spend hours actually looking at these because I want to make sure it is exactly what it's meant to say. So I would really appreciate that, and I know this could also come up in new business, but I brought this up before. That would help. Secondly, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the fact that you have Israel's flag before you there, and it's really welcome. These are bad times, but I'm all in favor of Option A. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, okay. Is there anyone, Regent Downs?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. Regent Downs, for the record, just to clarify. So my understanding of the two of the, the difference of the two of these, and Option A is, which I obviously support, we will have a vote. For Option B, we're still presented with information, but we don't have that vote. If something came up with Option B, if Option B was the case and it came up, then we'd have to take some action to then try to make changes to it versus Option A, we're able to address any problems at the time. So this is, I'm not sure I understand motives behind Option B unless it's just to, I won't say sure responsibility, but just to pass the buck a little bit. Option A, it is an active, it is active participation in this process instead of passive. So that's where I'm coming from with my support for Option A. Second thing I want to say is during the last Chancellor search, and I was on that committee, I don't remember any participation in trying to determine the salary placement of the, any of the candidates. It was just, the only time I saw it was when it came to the full Board. So I'm not sure I understand what legal is saying, that they work with the committee to set the salary schedule for the individuals. So, thank you.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I just want to clarify, it's the committee chair that we would deal with in bringing that forward to the full Board.
Thank you.
Regent Brager, you have a follow-up?
I guess I want, Susan Brager, for the record again, the one thing I would say is I see the difference, but I cannot imagine a Chancellor in listening to all of us do something against what we were saying in Option B because they'd be gone. You know, I think it's going to be a dialogue back and forth, and it's what I'm used to and doesn't make it right or wrong, by the way. And I respect always how everybody votes. I think we vote with our conscience and our gut, and I think that's great. I think it creates healthy conversation, but that's how I feel about that. I can't imagine a Chancellor just doing whatever they want, knowing that we are, one of our main responsibilities and actually top of the list is hiring and, I don't like the word firing, but dismissing someone that is not doing the job that is best for all, all employees, all students. And so I'm just going to leave it at that and no more conversation. But I still feel like B is a healthy way to work within the parameters of what we do. But I respect everyone's vote, and we move through these things. Thank you.
Chair Brooks, do you mind? This is?
No, go ahead.
Interim Chancellor Charlton, for the record. So just to clarify, it is quite common where the Board provides direction to the Chancellor on policy revisions and implementation and strategy. So I just want to say that, again, and you know in your materials, that the Chancellor's Office does support Option B. For that very reason, we work. We work at your pleasure. Anyone who stands in this role works at your pleasure in providing, getting your input and all of those approaches and the different questions that you would have in this process does also, again, keep it independent. And then, again, that's the direction that you provide to the Chancellor as it pertains to all kinds of different things that come up along the way. So just wanted to put that on the record that the Chancellor's Office does support Option B for that reason, and we do take direction from all of the Board. Thank you.
Regent Brown?
Thank you, Regent Brown, for the record. I do agree with my colleague, Regent Brager, that we do need to have a conversation and we need to be included in this dialogue. And that's actually why I'm supporting Option A, is because I think that gives us the opportunity to have that dialogue where I'm not sure where that dialogue would have happened, like automatically unless we ask for it. But this, this gives us an automatic way to have that conversation. And then as far as being a subject matter expert, I'm not a subject matter expert on higher education, yet I'm sitting here. And I'm, I have, I read the briefing materials, I have conversations, I learn from the subject matter experts, I digest it from my, you know, years of experience in the workforce, and then I make decisions. So I don't think being a subject matter expert is indicative of being able to make a good decision when you have subject matter experts that you're having a conversation for. So for those two reasons, I'm actually supporting Option A.
Great. And just for clarification, Regent Brooks, through you, to Regent Brown, both options provide the presentation and the Board to be involved. So both of them have a presentation that comes forward. You get to ask questions. You get to clarify any of the data and the components, and then also provide that feedback should there be other changes that need to be made. It's just in that final step. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear that both options provide your input and your ability to receive information.
Okay, so one more time for any comments or questions before we move into a roll call vote. I don't see anyone. Oh, Regent McMichael.
Yes, you'll have to excuse me. I'm still recovering from COVID. I've gone over both these options, and I scrutinized them as carefully as I can. And I believe that Option A still gives us the best choice as a Board. And that's basically what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other Regents? Last call for questions or comments. So essentially before us is a motion that was made by Regent Downs to approve code revisions for salary schedules with specifically Option A. It was seconded by Regent DelCarlo. Carrie, would you please take a roll call vote?
Regent Brown? Yes. Regent Carvalho?
Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford?
Aye.
Regent DelCarlo?
Aye.
Regent Downs?
Aye.
Regent Goodman?
No.
Regent McMichael? Regent McMichael?
Yes.
Regent Perkins? Regent Perkins? Regent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Regent Perkins, too.
Regent Tarkanian is absent. Vice Chair Ariscotta?
No.
Regent Boylan?
Aye.
Regent Brager?
No.
Chair Brooks?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Three. This is a bylaw revision for the election of officers. This item came before us through a Regent request. There were three Regents, Regent Brown, Regent Cruz Crawford, and Regent Downs. I will ask if there's any one of those three Regents that would like to speak first on the item. Regent Brown?
Oh, thank you, Chair Brooks. Regent Brown, for the record. So in talking with my two colleagues, we put the forth this item and came up with a couple of arguments in favor of it. And so if you'll just indulge me, so we'd like to align back with the academic year. You know, higher education institutions predominantly operate on an academic year basis, which spans from July to June. By aligning the election dates with the schedule, the Chair's term will naturally coincide with the academic calendar, facilitating a smoother collaboration and coordination with the Faculty Senate and the student body governing boards. This alignment enhances the Chair's ability to address academic concerns and effectively represent the interests of these key stakeholders. Continuity during the legislative session. So the biennial legislative session can be a complex and time-sensitive period for higher education institutions. And transitioning to a new Chair with only 35-day window before the start of the legislative session doesn't set the Board up for success and dampers the effective planning and execution during these crucial legislative session onramping. And then changing the election date from July to June ensures that the Chair remains in place during the entirety of the planning, execution, and lobbying phases of the legislative session and takes them through signee die. And it provides consistent leadership and advocacy for Enchi and our eight institutions. And then given our Chancellor and staff, it gives our Chancellor and staff a consistent voice and leader to prepare and work with throughout the preparations for the legislative session. And the last thing is just leadership on this Board, effective leadership and succession planning are vital for the Board's long-term success. And allowing the Chair to serve until their last day as a Regent is not always conducive to responsible leadership building. By shifting the election dates July to June, the Board can encourage more deliberate and effective leadership development. This change would provide ongoing Chairs with the opportunity to actively mentor and prepare their successor, fostering a smooth transition and maintaining strong leadership within the Board.
Regent Downs?
Thank you, Chair Brooks, and thank you to Regent Goodman for concisely stating all these arguments in favor of making this change. I obviously support this. Going back to the academic or fiscal calendar is, I think, has so many benefits. It helps with many of the leadership roles that are necessary for this, including, but not limited to, work with the Legislature. So I'd like to see this go back, and I'd like to make a motion now, if I'm allowed to, or if I need to wait till everyone speaks.
Regent Downs, you can always, you can always make a motion. I would imagine there's going to be some discussion. So I'll leave it up to you. If you'd like to make a motion, you can, or we can continue the discussion. Either way, we'll have some more voices chime in.
I'd like to make the motion that we move, we adopt this, this change as stated.
Second.
Was that Regent McMichael who seconded the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Regent Downs to approve a bylaw revision regarding the election of officers. And those elections would take place in, we would move those elections to take place in June rather than where they sit now in the we would move those elections to take place in June rather than where they sit now in December. This was seconded by Regent McMichael. We'll now open up the floor for discussion. Regent Cruz Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record. I just would like to know, because I was confused why this shift happened in the first place. So can someone share, just our constituents and our board, what historically has been done and when this shift moved the last time?
Sure, Regent Cruz Crawford. I'll, I'll give a little bit of history in it. The former board in December of '21 or '22, those who had frankly the most amount of experience in taking a look at how the board was set up for elections had come together and decided that there should be a change to support several different things. One of them was that because general elections take place in November, it would make sense to have our elections in December in case someone is termed out or is not reelected. And that actually happened with somebody who's here with us now, and it's our special counsel, Michael Wixson. In terms of the elections with faculty senate chairs, what was really, what was looked at was rather than having new officers, both with senate faculty and with the board, that previous regents who, again, had a lot of experience, thought it made sense to have chairs of the board already up and working with knowledge of the things that take place, regardless of when faculty senate would hold their elections. In fact, they looked at this as an improvement for communication and understanding and know-how with those faculty senate chairs. Also, in the summertime, when a June election would take place, there's actually less faculty, students, and engagement. And so it made sense that the elections would happen in December so that in January, new officers could come in, make their introductions, sit down with stakeholders, and have various conversations. There were some concerns about the legislative session, which were essentially opposite of what Regent Brown had voiced. And that was, based on when legislative sessions occur, it would make sense to have officers elected in December so that they could see through, after the legislative session, implementation, if anything was going to be, happened with Nevada's system of higher education, frankly. So that those officers were already in play and could follow up with things that happened during the legislative cycle. There were, Regent Dubrava in that meeting wanted to make this change specifically because he said that someone serving in their last year or two would be able to become a candidate for chair or vice chair, which would be beneficial. And also frankly, having elections in June could be disruptive to committees based on when and how they're set up. On, again, with elections that occur in November, there could be a shift of committee assignments. And the last consideration-- yeah, I think those were mostly the considerations that were brought up. I hope that, that at least answered your question, Regent Cruz Crawford.
Yeah, Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record. I appreciate that. I really want to know all perspectives so I can make an informed decision. I also-- so it sounds like a lot of like could, could, could for the reasoning, some could concerns. I'm trying to look at also what, over the years functioning of the board, what has the majority of time, have we done historically in regard to, in regard to this? Can someone share that, the time?
So this, Chair Brooks. So I would say that historically, elections took place in June. And then as, as regents, again, who had an awful lot of experience, were taking a look at things in a manner of hoping to set the board up for success as they were leaving their positions, discussions were had regarding changing elections from June to December. At that meeting, there were only-- of the regents who are here today, there were only two regents that did not vote for that. That was Regent DelCarlo and Regent Carvalho. The rest of the regents had voted to approve it. And so again, I hope that provides some clarity in terms of context.
So Regent Cruz Crawford, thank you, Chair. I really wanted some solid numbers. Like how many, how many of our years have we operated on this January model? And then also, when you say regents with more experience made a more knowledgeable decision, what do you mean by more experienced and knowledgeable? Because I kind of want some concrete facts so that I can, I can make this decision.
Chair Brooks, again, for the record, I appreciate that. So in terms of historical context, I would have to ask our chief of staff, Carrie Nicolajewski, to provide some true historical context. I've obviously been on the board, this is my third year. So I don't know how much historical context that I can provide other than what I know from my time in as a regent. And when I talk about those who have the most experience, I was talking about guys like Regent Dubrava and Regent Geddes, who served, you know, 12, 16 years on the board and were making determinations prior to them leaving in terms of how they felt things could go to benefit the board. And I will ask our-- just to help support, you know, additional timeline, I'll just ask our chief of staff to chime in with her knowledge.
Carrie Nicolajewski, chief of staff, for the record. To answer Regent Cruz Crawford's question, the elections that would occur in December for a term that starts in January, that policy's been in place for less than a year prior to that. Now, I didn't go back and count the years and didn't look back to see where it was before that. But in my memory, it has always been elections in June for a term that begins July 1. We have had a few occasions where a regent was either defeated in their election bid, or termed out, or just didn't run, where we had to have emergency elections for board officers. And we have had other occasions where we've had to restructure the committees because a regent was leaving the board in December. So it all just would come into play. I mean, whoever the chair is appointing committees would have to be thoughtful with those appointments because you could potentially appoint a chair to a committee that would only be there for six months and that would break some continuity there, if that's helpful.
Yeah, it is helpful. So basically 140 years we've been operating. I've spoken to constituents and, you know, staff at the universities. And they did say that aligned with their calendars, just the small group that I've spoken to. So yeah, I just want to make the right decision. And I feel that it makes sense. It makes sense for me as a building leader, to, as a K through 12 building leader, to make that connection from K through 12 to higher ed. So I appreciate the dialogue.
Regent Brown?
Thank you, Regent Brown, for the record. I wanted just to piggyback on some of the comments made. So I did say earlier that I am not a higher ed expert, but I am an election and government affairs expert. And I can tell you that unequivocally, it is better to have somebody take it through and lobby and share where the institution wants to lead. Going into a legislative session, take it all the way to signee die. And then if at that point there is a new chair, they can absolutely work with the staff on implementation. Having continuity 35 days before the start of the legislative session and then six months afterwards when-- and this is not, this is just the nature of who we are as a state with our legislative session. Nothing is happening right now at the legislature because it only happens for 120 days. So I would just-- that's the only comment where I think it's important to share just a different perspective. Because if we are talking about continuity, having a strong voice leading into it that can work on it for six months before the legislative session is much more valuable to this institution.
Regent Carvalho?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just also wanted to add some context to the conversation. At the, I believe it was the September 2022 board meeting where this change was made, I believe. Not that that really matters. But there was also a point that was brought up that, that new regents might not have the knowledge or the relationships built to, to vote for new leadership, which I thought was not-- I disagreed with that. So in this particular situation, the board voted in December for new leadership. So there were five outgoing regents who voted that were not going to be on the board anymore. And so the five new regents who were incoming had no voice in leadership for this year. And I think that that's an issue as well. I think that our newest regents, the five newest regents on the board, would say that by June, you have a good feel for who your leaders should be. Frankly, when I was on the board after six months, I nominated our leader for that year. So I want to add that, that there is that issue as well, that you may come across situations, as we did with this last year, where five regents are voting on leadership, that they have no-- they won't be on the board anymore. And so I don't think that that's a-- I don't think that that sets our board up well for success either. So I firmly believe that a June election is best for our board. I don't think it should be based on the election cycle. I think it should be based on the fiscal and academic year. So I just wanted to add that point as well. Thank you.
Regent Downs?
Thank you, Chair Brooks, and Regent Downs, for the record. I want to just applaud what I've been hearing from Regent Brown, Regent Cruz Crawford, Regent Carvalho. There are a lot of reasons I have, we're wanting to go back to this more traditional and historical time period. It is-- I didn't want to make that point, but there were five people who got to influence how the board leadership was going to be, who were not serving under that new leadership. And I don't say that as a criticism of leadership, but it was certainly showed the level of influence they wanted to have as they were leaving. And I find it fairly condescending to say that five new regents would not have the experience necessary to make a decision in June. That's, I don't know, that's belittling, belittling, to say the least. So going back to a traditional, I would like to see-- I feel very confident with any new regents coming on, making decisions, being part of this group, and not being excluded from the decision-making process. Thank you.
Regent Goodman?
I just wanted to say that I do feel that the previous board, I felt, chose some very good leadership. And I think it's, we've been under good leadership this past year. I just wanted to make that point. Additionally, it doesn't really matter, but to me, you know, it looks like it's the will of the board to want to have this. And there were some valid points made. So I am a firm believer in picking your battles. And I just wanted to make that point, that I do think that the board left us with good leadership. And moving forward, I have no problem supporting this.
Are there any other regents with questions or comments regarding the agenda item? I'll ask Carrie to take a roll call vote. As a reminder, this is a bylaw revision. Will need-- takes nine votes, affirmative votes to pass. This revision was a motion to approve by Regent Downs, seconded by Regent McMichael. The revision calls for the election of board officers to occur at the last regular meeting of the annual fiscal year with a term of office that shall commence on July 1st and end on July 30th. If the following calendar year provided, however-- so in addition, there'll be an election of the board officers that will take place on the November 30th, December 1st, 2023 quarterly board meeting. Those officers shall serve a six-month term commencing on January 1st, 2024, and ending on June 30th, 2024. Carrie, you take a roll call vote for the motion for this approval of bylaw revisions.
Regent Carvalho?
Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford?
Aye.
Regent DelCarlo?
Aye.
Regent Downs?
Aye.
Regent Goodman?
Aye.
Regent McMichael?
Yes.
Regent Perkins?
Aye.
Regent Tarkanian is absent. Vice Chair Ariscotta?
Al.
Regent Boylan?
Aye.
Regent Brager?
Yes.
Chair Brooks?
No.
Regent Brown?
Yes.
The motion passes.
We will now move on to agenda item number four. Is there any suggested items of new business for consideration for a future meeting? Regent Boylan?
Thank you, Chair. Like I mentioned earlier, I really would appreciate it, and I think other regents that I have spoken to would appreciate it when there are policies or anything put up for us to see that there should be a link directly to that policy so we can read it. It takes a tremendous amount of time to go through each one to make sure it is exactly what is written in the agenda. So it's not a big issue, whoever looks up those policies, they can just put the link there and make it just a wee bit easier for all of us. And I'd like to bring that up in the next meeting or something so that we make that another policy or-- I think it's in the policy somewhere and I've read it, but I don't remember. So that will be something that I'd really appreciate, along with other regions. Thank you, sir.
Regent Downs?
I didn't have anything.
Regent Brager?
Thank you, Susan Brager, for the record. I think that the way we process agenda items is really unique. None of mine have ever come forward. I even forget what they are, it's been so many months. I would like to see a discussion on a specific date and time on holding meetings, not just abstract, because I think it's just difficult like that. So if it was the third or fourth Thursday, whatever we decide on, I'm just using that as an example, that I think we would be better able to be informed and be able to be here if we knew like the third Thursday of every month. And if we don't get it, don't feel like, oh, gosh, it ruined my day. Look at it as a free day. It wouldn't be a free day for me, I'd just go to work. But I think it would just be more consistent and professional, I'm going to say that. So I would really like to see this come forward. And I think it would be good for most trustees. I can't speak for any of them, I haven't even spoken to them, I don't think about it. I think I've asked for this three or four or five times. And I think it's important that it move forward. I think it would just suit us to know when and what we're doing, unless there's an emergency call for a meeting. That's on any board in all the years that I've served. So thank you.
Regent Cruz Crawford?
Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record, yes. Regent Brager, I would really like, like that as well. It's hard. This is a big priority for me, but when we have these 45-minute meetings that could be condensed into other meetings, it would be more effective to do that, I believe, for a lot of regents. My new business or item that I would like to discuss is I'd really like to explore how to be-- to be more effective with the board, meaning looking at our five strategic goals and metrics. And I'd love to do a work session, love meaning it's imperative that we look at what our strategic goals are and what our action items are and outcomes that we desire. I think we need to get back into being a more productive board and supporting our institutions with those outcomes. So I'd like for us to have a work session as regents and with our, our presidents, I think would be effective and our faculty to look at what, what does each goal mean? What does that outcome look like for us? And a timeline and a process for achieving that. Because, you know, I get a lot of constituents asking, what, what are we doing? What are we doing as a board? And I know we are, are, we all have different priorities, kind of going, competing priorities that we're all passionate about. And I'd like to hem that up so that we can really impact and make a positive change for our students and our staff and our community. Thank you.
Is there any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is public comment. Is there any public comment at GBC?
No public comment at GBC at this time.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the system office in Reno? Thank you. Is there any public comment here in Las Vegas? Is there any public comment with SCS on the line?
It's time. Not at this time.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.